Order and begin with the pledge of the flag, please.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Moment of silent meditation, please.
Mr. Formanski?
Here.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Howe?
Here.
Mr. Kelleher?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Mr. Vog?
Present.
Ms. Wacus?
Present.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Mr. McGinnley, present.
Okay. Moving on recognitions and ceremonial proclamations, we have three retirements from the county during the past month. Paul Binker, who worked with our maintenance repair man in Roden Bridge, Ronald Miller, equipment operator, and Susan Tomalavious, deputy sheriff. And we will be sending them a letter thanking them for their service and congratulating them on their retirement. Any additions or deletions from the voting session agenda? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Mr. Kelleher and Ms. Sedman, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Public comment? Any agenda items? Mr. McCabe?
Yeah, I don't want to say anything. No, I don't want to agenda.
Next, okay. Mr. Griffin?
For the public session? All right.
Non-agenda items, so you want to do that, Dan?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Scheiner?
Yep.
Very momentous occasion today, Mr. Scheiner, is that right?
I heard.
You heard? I think you would know, wouldn't you?
I'm 39 again.
Again?
I just need Linda to teach me how to play the violin. I'll be okay.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
I'd like to comment on the contract with consideration for MCM Consulting. I was reviewing the resolution, and it says that it's requires meeting attendance, acquisition, development of requests for proposals, funding plan assistance, grant writing assistance, and a complete technical design of a newly recommended VHF IP-based P-25 Phase II trunked, multi-zone simulcast radio system. Do you think maybe you're putting the cart before the horse here? I don't remember council voting to take out the $20 million loan we need to implement this. So why would you want to hire a company to act as the consultant to implement the whole thing when you don't have the approval to take out the loan, nor do have the loan? I don't understand this. I thought that this loan approval had to be voted on by the council to move ahead. And while I'm sure it would pass and follow through, it hasn't been done yet. So I don't see why you'd want to spend all this money on a consulting group to help you implement this digital transfer over to the radio systems for the county without having everything in proper order. Thank you.
Okay. When we get to that point on the agenda, we'll have Mr. Rosenkranz come up, and maybe he can help us with some of that. Anyone else in the audience who would like to comment on any agenda items? Okay, moving on. Motion regards to the minutes of the November 13 meeting. Motion to...
So moved.
Pro, Mr. Schnee?
Second.
Ms. Wacus? On the question? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any in opposition? Mr. Urban? Motion carries. Moving over to the back page of the voting session agenda. Motion to adopt the resolution and authorize the county manager to execute an agreement with the MCM Consulting Group for the P-25 Phase II Digital Radio System Project Management. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Kelleher, do we have a second? Second. Mr. Perry? On the question, Mr. Rosenkranz, you want to come to the podium, please?
Good evening.
You heard Mr. Scheiner's comment?
Yes.
Could you address that first, please?
Just to clarify, it's not for the full acquisition of the system. This is expert consulting services and counsel for RFP or bid development and services up until contract award. So certainly before any amount of money is spent on a system, options will be brought before council that will be decided upon at that time. So this is for RFP development specifications to put together in the bid, survey the system, and give recommendations for implementation at the time.
And remind me, when does this project begin, when the implementation, you believe?
As far as the radio project?
Yes.
If we move forward with it?
Yep.
I would say one year from today, so, you know, December of next year, possibly.
December 2019.
Council could have a decision if we were to release the bid, you know, in February. It's usually about a four to six-month process going through everything, looking at everything. So certainly, we would bring that before council and discuss that, what our options would be.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Haas?
Mr. Chair, hey, Mr. Rosenkranz, thanks for coming out. It's my understanding, when we spoke at last meeting, that this is a very necessary step to even consider the proposal to purchase the equipment or lease it or whatever.
Absolutely.
Right? So we have to do this, essentially. I believe it was you, as a representative of MCM is here tonight, you said they had other contracts for similar work across the Commonwealth.
Yes.
I think Erie County was mentioned.
Correct.
For one in particular. And I asked at that point, was, do we have any, was, do we have any exact figures on some significant savings that was realized for any of those counties that the MCM worked for? Like, can you give a ballpark estimate, or do you have any data about, you know, hey, they saved 50%? They procured a couple grants, they landed this allocation that really saved the county money?
They saved Erie County millions.
Okay.
Millions, $3 to $5 million off the original contract estimate, estimated budget.
Now, I mean, their third class, like us, and the system is probably about the similar cost, about $20 million.
Home Rule, they worked through the budgetary process with the Home Rule County, the whole system design specs. They beat up on the vendors pretty well for us, so...
Yeah.
That's where their expert counsel comes in as far as guiding us in the right direction.
Sure. Then again, this doesn't encumber us to make a purchase whatsoever, it's just the step to start the process, essentially.
Correct, yeah. And as I stated at the last meeting, until we get a bid spec on the street, that's, this is the most critical point for us, to make sure that we capture everything, get it into that bid spec, so we have a very good idea, solid idea, what the total project cost potential could be. And once that bid's released, we'll have a good idea, once they come back, the vendors, with the bid prices.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Other questions? Yes, Ms. Urban?
You, you have anybody at your facility with any radio experience? Anybody that's a, you know, maintains the radio system?
P-25 digital radio experience? None.
No?
None.
You don't have anybody?
Nobody at all? No.
Well, you have a radio system, but nobody at the...
We have an analog system that we currently have a vendor that maintains it, Convergence Communications.
Nobody with any experience?
What, what the... I have limited experience, but again, this comes down to time as well, Mr. Urban.
Yeah.
I mean, I've, you know, running a 911 center and doing a project like this is a monstrosity of a task, if you're familiar with the, with the market.
My past lifetime, I, I worked with the Army Criminal Investigation Command, and they did, every one of their communication systems, west of the Mississippi, Alaska, and Hawaii, I designed them, I, I ordered them, I wrecked them, I had them installed. And I didn't have to go out to any contractors to do this stuff. So that's why I'm, I'm trying to figure out, you've got this huge 911 system that covers the county, but you don't have any employees with any radio experience.
We have radio experience, that's not an accurate statement. We don't have P-25 digital trunked radio system experience. Again, this is a huge undertaking, and what was the technology when you designed those systems back then? What year was it?
We went, we went, we went from regular radios to the, uh, digital, and we went to encrypted systems.
What year?
Well, back in the, back in the 80s and 90s.
The technology wasn't there then?
Yeah, but the question is, though, I was able to go out and do these things on my own, you know, and I think that some people should be current what's going on in the marketplace in your facility, and it seems like they're not. And so now we've got to go hire a contractor to do what I think should be done internally. The other question I still have is, is there money? There was no money put in the budget, next year's budget, for this project, right? None, not at all, none earmarked in the budget. So the budget we're, we're going over now, there's no money in there for this. The only money you had was the, the money that you mentioned was in, budget wasn't enough to cover the full cost of this consulting project.
It was in the general fund, and it was removed.
Correct. So if I could just jump on this one, Mr. Urban, you asked me to take a look at this. 11 months of the contract, approximately $114,000, $107.18 is in the 2019 proposed budget, that's in, that's in the 911 budget for their side of things. The second side is the general fund portion of this that we would have to come up with, which is $266,249.96. It's really up to council how you like to proceed with how you want to pay for this. I left it up to you, but here are your options. You can pay for it out of this year's reserve fund. This year, there are $6 million currently in the reserve that county administration has no need for, a full $6 million to be done with by the end of the year. I think a portion of that will be needed for odd purposes, but not in any way, shape, or form of the full six, the full $6 million. That can be an option for county council. In addition, through the good work of our new director of planning and zoning, Mr. Heath, and Mr. Stronsky, we just received word from the state of receiving, of $235,000 in reimbursements for the planning and zoning department from PennDOT. Those are for the, the previous months that weren't allocated before. So there's $235,000 coming to Luzerne County within the next week or two. That can be something that could be utilized to pay for this as well. County council can allocate those funds into the reserve fund and pay for this from there, or it can go into a revenue line item within planning and zoning. That could also be an option for county council. The final option that county council has, if you would like to do this, would be if there is a borrowing in 2019, that's once again your purview, you can add these costs into that borrowing. So as opposed to borrowing $20 million, you would borrow $20 million point two, and those costs will be included in that, which would be a allowable purpose for that. Now, obviously, there's, there's pros and cons of all those options, but those are the options that council has to allocate, or any other option that council has as well. I would recommend you take one of those three options, either taking out of this year's current reserve, taking it out of the money we just got in from planning and zoning, and adding another $30,000 to that, or borrowing those funds in the 20, in the 2020, 2019 borrowing.
Question. So, Mr. Pedrick, are you saying that this $235,000 that we received from the state was totally unexpected?
It wasn't unexpected. It's for, it's for work that was, that was completed in 2017, 2016, so those books are closed for odd purposes.
Okay, so that would go possibly in the reserve fund, and then the amount that this cost could be taken out and almost be a wash?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so we in no way, shape, or form budgeted those funds to be received in 2018. I appreciate the good, hard work of our planning and zoning department to make sure we get these funds in the door, and they came in opportune time here. So we have $235 here. If council would allocate an extra $30,000 from the reserve, that's, we come in pretty good.
But the $235 was previously, instead of being paid for out of reimbursements, because they weren't submitted to the state, you took money out of the general fund to pay for the planning and zoning department's operation for a two-year period?
Correct.
So that money rightfully should, should go back into the general fund?
Correct.
Right.
So that's why I have this money either go into the general fund, either through revenue, or through the reserve, which is the general fund, whichever council would like to choose.
The other question is, you go along with this today, you're basically committing to a $20 million borrowing next year.
I don't believe so.
Why are we going to spend $300,000 to $400,000 if you're not going to go out and borrow $20 million?
Well, I don't think it'll be the full $20 million, but obviously, I will be coming to county council in 2019 with, with the plans for the 911 system. And whether that's a full $20 million or a lesser amount, that's, that's to be seen. We're continually seeking out grant funding. Mr. Rosenkranz is due in front of the Redevelopment Authority. We're, we're going to be seeking an LSA grant for over a million dollars for two tower sites in the Back Mountain, and that will take, hopefully take a portion of this, of this funding as way, as well.
Mr. Urban said that we're making a commitment on the $20 million, but isn't the 911 system that we have, isn't that a requirement for the county?
Well, public safety, in my mind, is an absolute requirement for, for what we do. We have to provide public safety. We, we have received word from Motorola that we are end-of-life for our analog system at the end of 2020, at the, at the end of 2019.
19.
2019, excuse me. So I'm, I, I'm not thrilled about this. Nobody's, nobody's happy that we took this thing on at this point, but this is what we have. And public safety is an absolute requirement that Luzerne County has to provide. We could continue to use the Luzerne County current analog system. It will be out of date and at end-of-life in just over a year. And that's a concern that, that I've brought to county council numerous times over my time as county manager.
But to be fair to the argument, too, the lights are not going to go out on December 31st.
Absolutely not. This isn't a Y2K thing where everything shuts off, yes.
Exactly. I mean, end-of-life, you know, our voting machines, they're at the end of life, too, but they're still very functionable.
Absolutely.
So we've got to keep in mind, I see what you're saying, Steve. I know, I don't expect, I don't, I don't view this as a definitive encumbrance of $20 million, and I don't support that. What I'm excited, I'm not, I shouldn't even say that, we're not excited, but I'm very eager to see what can be procured from this consultant, and if, if they can do us a real justice, you know, I'm all ears. But I agree with the manager, Tim, public safety is public safety, that's what, what we signed on to this task for. But I just think there's, there's many ways, there's many different pots of money out there, many different things. I, I'm hoping, should we sign on to this, that MCM will, will do their due diligence.
Well, first of all, I think the 911, we know is end-of-life. That's been the notification that we received, we've known that for probably well over a year.
It's technically been end-of-life since 2012. They stopped manufacturing this equipment.
And I think the last year, we really probably brought it to the top of the hip.
Yeah.
Of the list here. There's no way we can operate without having our 911 system up and running and meeting the standards it's supposed to meet. All the citizens out there are counting on that.
I cannot in good conscience support that. We have to do something.
Yes.
Whether, whether it's upgrade to this current system, whatever...
How are you going to upgrade a current system that's at end-of-life?
Well, it would stay analog, but that's, again, where the consultant comes in, we look at all options.
Okay.
We don't just look at, at going out and spending $20 million.
Well, I...
It's, it's only a matter of time before we must go digital. So my theory is, why invest millions in a system to upgrade it at this point when all you're doing is kicking the can down the road again? You know, and again, it's public safety. This isn't, this isn't a television we're talking about here.
For us to upgrade...
This is officer life safety.
Us to upgrade the present system.
It's not feasible, in my opinion.
Millions of dollars with an end-of-life notice, knowing that you're going to have to go digital, might be a year or two more, maybe, and then you're going to spend maybe $22 million.
It's possible, yes.
Who knows what the price would be?
Yes.
I mean, I don't think we have any idea what we're looking at here unless we do the right, proper thing now. And that is to get started on the project and find out what our costs are.
That's where we're at, that's, that's what I suggest.
Yep. Any other questions for...
Just a comment, too, Ms. Chair, I was at a fall conference for C cap a couple weekends ago, and a lot of counties are dealing with this exact issue. Ms. Rosenkranz, I'm sure you could probably list the counties themselves that specifically they're having the same issue. So again, if we can do economies of scale and put our heads together, combine resources, again, this is something the state, and I know I'm beating this drum to death, I don't think there's any, there's no skin on the drum anymore, but the, the state needs to really help us out here at the local level.
Don't disagree with me, but we have an obligation. Ms. Howe?
Yes, I have a couple of things. Number one, we talked last week about why Mr. Rosenkranz feels it would be better to hire a consulting firm, and I can understand that, especially if we're looking at committing to $20 million or somewhere thereabouts, which I think we are doing through this, and not that it, it isn't necessary for public safety. But I will say that in seven years on council, I don't believe I've ever voted for some, or been asked to vote for something that committed the county to spending money with no idea of where the money was coming from. So while I appreciate that the manager has said he's going to leave it up to council as to where the money comes from, I think that if it needs to be paid in 2019, which it looks like according to the payment schedule, this would be paid in 2019, the $266,000, I think it's really incumbent upon management to say, here is where the money is coming from, just as he's done with everything else in the budget, in the 2019 budget. Everything has a line item. We've got allocations for consulting fees all over the place in that budget, other, other fees, management and consulting, in every single division and department you see those, yet this one isn't in there. I do think that management should have done that, but before we, since it's not done, before we take a vote on this tonight, I would appreciate it if someone on council who has a good idea of where this money should come from would make an amendment to this, specifying where that money will come from. And if you want to take it out of that reimbursement that came from the state and then say that it's almost a wash, and we'll put another $30,000 into it from the, the reserve fund, that's fine, just state where the money is coming from. I don't want to vote on a pig and a poke.
I'd make that amendment.
Take it out of reserve.
All of it?
All of it.
Second that motion.
Is that the 2018 reserve or is it...
The current reserve of this year's budget.
And I also want to make an amendment that we put the $234 that comes in, into the reserve.
Correct.
We could do that, but I think that, that could be a separate, but this is amendment for this particular contract.
Well, he said it was for this, the manager made the recommendation.
And I agree, and we could do that, but I think right now, this is amendment to this particular item, and then we'll set that, your motion on that. Motion by myself, a second by Mr. Kelleher. Questions on that?
Yeah, what would you say was exactly that amendment?
Motion is that we take all of the costs involved, the contract, out of this current reserve.
From the 2018 reserve?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call.
On the amendment?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Yes. And going back to the motion, we now have amendment to, motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute an agreement with the MCM Consulting Group for the P-25 Phase II Digital Radio System Project Management. Mr. Kelleher made that motion, Mr. Perry seconded that. Any other questions?
I just want to make a comment. The idea of this is to get experts to come in and say, here's the, here are your options for a system. Here's where you should go. It might not cost $20 million, it might cost a little more, it might cost less. We're hoping it's going to cost less. We're not making a commitment to, I think anybody here in their right mind has to say, we want to get a system, we want to get a digital system, so that we're up to snuff, because it's going to be harder and harder to get parts for an analog system, which, and digital is a better system right now. But we're bringing onboard experts who can give us expert advice on the system. I know for one, I'll speak for myself, I have no knowledge of what your system should be. I just know you're doing a heck of a job, my friend.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yeah.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving down to number two, motion to adopt the resolution, designate the county manager as agent for the purposes of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Schnee, you have a second?
Second.
Ms. Wacus, on the question?
This is for one year? Is this a year at a time?
How long is the timeframe on this, please? Mr. Urban has that question.
I think it's every year.
That was a five-year plan, but I don't know.
This is for the, this is for the paperwork and documentation that has to be executed in order to obtain the grant for the assistance, the funding assistance for the consulting firm.
Right.
Which will be less than a year. We hope to have, we hope to have...
It's a five-year plan?
It's a five-year plan, so this is for that cycle.
So it's just the application to...
This is the application, yeah. So this, this will be done within a few months.
Okay, Mr. Urban?
Yeah.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Very good. Moving down to number three, motion to adopt the resolution, authorizing the county manager to execute a lease agreement between Luzerne and Wyoming County's Area Agency on Aging and Butler Township for the Butler Township Active Adults Center.
So moved.
Mr. Kelleher, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Ms. Wacus, on the question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?[1563.83]
Agency on Aging in Butler Township for the Butler Township Active Adults Center.
So moved.
Mr. Kelleher, we have a second?
Second.
Second. Ms. Wacus, on the question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vo?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Very good. Moving down to number four, motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a lease agreement between Luzerne County and Shakshini Borough from the premises located 35 West Union Street, Shakshini, Pennsylvania, 28655. And that is for the magistrate's office there. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Chair.
Mr. Haas, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Urban, on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vo?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Very good. Moving down to number five, motion to adopt the resolution declaring a vacancy in Luzerne County Convention Center Authority. Mr. Cunningham, we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Kelleher, Ms. Sedman, on the question? Roll call, vote. Roll call, please.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vo?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
With regrets, yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Very good. Public comment from any member of the audience on any item? Mr. Griffin?
Mr. President, Council members, I wanted to give the council an update on what our opioid committee has done in the past few weeks. We spoke before Hazleton Council and President Gavio wants to work with county council. We spoke to Senator Casey's office, and we are setting up a meeting. We spoke to Wilkes-Barre College President Laye's office, and we'll be meeting soon. Three weeks ago, an Iraqi veteran died from fentanyl in Wilkes-Barre. Last week, a Penn State student in Lehman Campus died of a drug overdose. The coroner sat in this room last meeting and said that the numbers will be high again for drug deaths this year in Luzerne County. We met with ADA Assistant District Attorney Dan Zola and his officers of the Luzerne County Drug Task Force for over an hour. Assistant District Attorney Zola and his officers told us the Drug Task Force needs more funding. Mr. President, can you appoint some council members to meet with the Drug Task Force in order to see what they need?
Are you finished with your comments, Mr. Griffin? First of all, I'm not Mr. President, okay?
Yeah.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not aware of, I'd have to check out what the Drug Task Force, what the parameters are, et cetera. But I certainly can do that, and I'll follow up with you.
Great. Mr. Assistant District Attorney Zola.
Yeah, I know that his capacity is dealing with.
He asked me to speak before you today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scheiner?
The Home Rule Charter in Section 503 discusses the budget format. It says, "The format of the proposed budget shall be as provided for in the Administrative Code. However, unless changed by the Administrative Code, the budget shall add a minimum, be line item budgets structured by Division, Department, Bureau Office, Agency Board, Commission, elective office, judiciary, office of court administration, and other administrative unit or budgetary function, and meet current recognized best practices." It also says that it will provide comparative figures for the current fiscal year and actual figures for at least the preceding fiscal year. If you then go to our Administrative Code, Section 802 under Budget Administration says, "The budgets for each year shall be adopted by county council as set forth in the county charter, and shall include a position budget that lists positions defined by the manager as necessary to county operations, along with the defined compensation for each position." Now, I'm reading this again, as I did last year on October 17th, but nothing's been changed. The only thing that's been changed is this year, the manager has changed position budget on the website to a position list. There are no totals by department or division of any kind. It's just a list. But yet, nothing's done. There are no prior year position budgets available to be viewed on the website. They don't exist. They've been taken down. I don't understand. Why does council sit here and do nothing? The other thing I don't understand is why in your ordinances and your codes, you do not have any penalties. You're allowed to impose penalties. Section 213, Paragraph 2 of our charter allows you to establish penalties by ordinance, but you do nothing. I also question why the district attorney does not pursue any of these violations. We have had charter violation after charter violation, violations of our Administrative Code, Ethics Code, you name it, write down the list since 2012, and our district attorney sits and does nothing, just as the council. Maybe the media could contact the district attorney and question why she does nothing. She's sworn to uphold the laws of the state and this county. Home Rule Charter is the law of the county, yet she does nothing. This council does nothing. When are you going to start doing something? When is our DA going to start doing something? The citizens of this county, the residents herein, should not be required to spend their hard-earned dollars to bring legal action against the violators. Council needs to do something about this, and this position list is just one of many. It needs to be changed, needs to be rectified, and the DA needs to be accountable for not pursuing these. Thank you.
Mr. McCabe?
Hey, council. I'm not here on the Water Street Bridge tonight. The budget's coming up, and I have a couple of questions. How far are we going to go with, you know, you're talking budget, you're going to raise taxes totally like according to the manager, but how much reduction in the assessment did this council or the assessment board grant? How many millions or billions of dollars this year did we grant? When are we going to stop it so the average citizen doesn't have to keep paying taxes? That's only one question, you know what I mean? It's just, today's paper times leader, all these millions of dollars reduction. Come on, let's stop it, you know? It's got to stop somewhere, you know? Couple years ago, when the manager took over, we had a big cut in employees in courthouse. And from what I hear, there's a lot of new employees, and they're not peons, mechanics and that. We want to pay a mechanic $12, but you know what? They're skilled trades. You got to pay these guys to get them. You know, I go by the Midway Shopping Center, you see all these contractors cutting grass and that. That's something that the average Joe in the county used to do. And now, we're, we're just putting all these white shirts in the courthouse, and you're saying that you don't have mechanics to fix the tractors, the trucks? It's a shame they read this in the paper. Would it be an assessment, we have a couple hundred new employees, Dave, in the county in the last couple of years?
No. I had the numbers for you.
Let Ms. McCabe finish her comments.
Okay, okay. Okay, when you hire a new employee off the street for tourism, right, you're paying him $70,000, close to what I read in the paper, and I think it's sad. You should start somewhere down around 40, 50,000, you know? The guy was an insurance man all his life, and it's sad to see salaries start at this, you know? Just to keep it in the back of your mind for next time, you know, and is the authority part of the county government?
No, it's not. It's like you just said, authority. It's an authority.
They're not part of, under your jurisdiction?
No, sir.
No, because I was going to ask you a question on that water runoff, you know, and it's just another tax that we're going to get hit with in January.
I'm sorry, you'll have to go to their group and ask that question.
You can't even get them to answer the phone, sir.
Well, sorry about that, but.
Okay, we have a, we have a $6 million, from what I hear tonight, we have a $6 million reserve fund. Is there any way we can put some of that towards raising the taxes and for the average Joes?
Towards what, raising the taxes?
Well, he's talking about raising taxes.
Or offsetting the taxes.
Well, either way, you know?
Okay.
Well, I'm just saying, but if this guy didn't the okay to do it, you know, he's going to get away with it, but I'm just saying that with a $6 million reserve fund, and you ought to borrow $20 million.
That's a figure that's been bandied about, but that's not a set in stone figure.
So where are you going to get this money to pay it back? Is the taxes, is this trying to tell us that we're going to be paying, 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 and?
Well, you know.
And then your sisters, like, they're saying, like, they propose not a tentative budget, they're not going to have a tax increase, but the one, two of the majority said that they're going to vote, no tax increase, but the other guy said, well, we got to pay the retirement, the pension benefits. But, and then there was a county down the line, they're not going to raise taxes, but, you know, it gets sad to see us with a $20 million borrowing and $6 million reserve, and yet, we're going to raise taxes, you know? So just sit down and think about it before you vote the final. I didn't want to come here, but, you know, you sit down and you read all the time in the paper and.
You're welcome, Ms. McCabe, anytime.
Thank you, thank you.
Just so you realize, the county council doesn't vote on assessment appeals. There is a board that deals with that issue, and we do not as a board here.
One last question on it. Okay, the assessment board is what, three members on it?
Three members.
Okay. How many of these cases actually goes before the board, and how many goes before judges?
I think you have to direct that question to the assessment office. They would be able to give you the numbers.
Does anybody have your time?
I don't believe there is, but that's who we'd have to see.
Because we get carried away, you know, to see now these millions of dollars reduction, you know? Come on, you got to stop it somewhere, you know?
Okay.
You guys are on the council, you know, these guys got to use the hammer and say we're going to redo something with it, you know?
Okay. Mr. Raybo?
Good evening. I would first like to address for the 911. I don't know if it would be Mr. Rosenkrantz who can answer this question, or the consulting group, but I don't know, did, in the period of 2012, there were nine counties that were looking to upgrade their 911 system to be Next Gen compliant. And the consulting group that's being voted on to be hired, or being, you know, their hired contractor, MCM Consulting Group, was the contractor of this for the nine counties that were looking to upgrade their systems in 2012. Now, I asked this question as far as if MCM or if reached out to this county, or if the county reached out to the other counties at the time, because this was a substantial cost savings. And I'm like, confounded as to why Luzerne County didn't jump on this when this was going on, because, I mean, with the maintenance costs, you're saving, I mean, like, the county says, it says here, the total for the region, okay, the average yearly maintenance for each county would be $46,904, and the average county shared cost would be $161,713.62. So, and that's just for the equipment, not the towers. I'm not talking about the towers. I'm talking about the actual, the radios and stuff like that. So I would like to know the answer to that question if, because their system was reportedly lacking redundancy and were not interconnected or capable with Next Gen 911. So I would like to know if, you know, the consulting, if the other counties reached out, somebody in the other counties reached out to Luzerne County, or if Luzerne County reached out to the other counties. And also, this consulting group happens to do hazard mitigation plans as well. So I found that very interesting, considering that that's on the agenda, and this, this contract, this consulting group has a forte in hazard mitigation. I would like to know if that is somewhere, you know, in the think of the management on that issue. Also, I would like to know about the court, as far as, since that's coming up on the work session and the budget work session, if Mr. Shakovsky reached out to the AOPC for more money with respect to the staffing, since we saw recently on the news that the, the judges and the state representatives and senators of the General Assembly have gotten a nice raise before Christmas. So I was wondering if maybe that was factored in during the budget process for the state during the summertime, or if that was just a resolution during this lame duck session of the General Assembly. So I would like to know if maybe Mr. Shakovsky or reached out to somebody in the AOPC that would find out that figure as far as if they were factoring in more money for the reimbursement. Since 1996, there was an agreement by the 53, or 67 counties and the state for more money, for 20% for the reimbursement, but this county is only seeing, what, 1%? So I think that needs to be discussed again. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rosenkrantz, you want to talk about that 911 situation, 2012, which is six years ago?
So I believe Mr. Raybo is discussing the nine-county phone system, the next-generation 911 phone system that's shared out in the West Core region out near Pittsburgh. That was a nine-county shared phone system project upgrade back then. We recently received over $7 million for our region with the Neecor region for our phone system upgrade, and will be going live in January.
So that has nothing to do with the?
Has nothing to do with the radio project.
Thank you.
So that's saving us over $250,000 a year through grant funding and through annual maintenance for our 911 phone system.
Thank you. Anything else?
Martin.
Excuse me? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Go to the podium, please.
Thank you. It's emotionally painful.
We need, will you speak into the microphone so everyone can hear, please?
Thank you.
Yes. Your name again?
Martin.
What's your name again, please?
Martin.
Martin.
Martin D'Arto.
Okay.
It's emotionally painful to hear the cries of the masses, and things are not being done. Why is it? But yet, these are the same people that elect each and every individual to do things that needs to be done within our valley. The question is, why is it? Can I have my answer, please? Why, are we against the people, or are we working for the people?
Who's against the people?
If you're not doing things that needs to be done for the people, then to me, it's looked like we're against the people. And but yet, these are the same people who go on the voting board and push that button to make sure that each and every individual is in a position that we're in today.
Well, and you're right about the voting. You have an opportunity to vote every four years.
The people crying, the masses are crying. Why are things are not being done? Why is it taking so long? Why are we delaying things? We have to pick up the pace.
I don't have an answer for the length of time.
We have to pick up the pace.
Okay.
Because that can set an example within our valley throughout the country.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, do we have a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Mr. Kelleher, Ms. Sedman, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to go to the budget work session. We'll do the work session items first and take a break before we get into the budget reports. So roll call, please. Sessions called to order. Roll call.
Mr. Berminski?
Here.
Ms. Howe?
Here.
Mr. Kelleher?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vo?
Here.
Ms. Wacus?
Present.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Ten, eleven?
Ten. additions or deletions of the work session agenda?
Mr. McGinley, at some point, whenever the manager, because we don't have an actual manager's report in here, I would appreciate an update on the progress that Children and Youth is making to document that $2.5 million that was noted in the 2017 audit.
Update Children and Youth audit, specifically the five-point?
$2.5 million.
$2.5 million.
The $5.6 million was a separate item.
Yeah, that's.
Well, he could give us an update on both of those if he has them.
Well, I think Mr. Swetz is here, so he can help us out also.
Ms. McGinley, I'd just like to get an update, too, from Mr. Swetz on, you know, we, we have these monthly and we have these quarterly budget reviews which go over spending, but obviously, in the Planning Commission, we weren't looking at revenue. I mean, if you're expecting $234,000 a quarter, and you don't see it for two years, then something is missing in the department. And I'd like to, Mr. Swetz, to explain why, for two years, there were no reimbursements submitted, and why the money was taken out of the general fund, and why there was no follow-up for almost two years.
Mr. Swetz, you want to begin with your budget report, and then talk about the Children and Youth audit?
Sure.
And then Children, and then Planning and zoning?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
So on the budget report, on, on page 17, so I usually give you the high level and then whatever questions. So page 17 is the revenue. Towards the bottom of page 17, $106.4 million, 97%. That's around where we were last year. If you, if you remember, you get the budget report and then the manager report, but in the manager report, I put some financial updates. So we're pretty much right on track where we were last year for tax revenue. On page 56, so you're, you're towards the end here, you'll see that there's a reserve number in there. So if you look at Division 99, and you'll also see worth $32 million of the good, I just want to let council know as I do every year, there's over $12 million worth of debt service payments still in there, because this is the October report, and this is the October report, so there's still payrolls for November and December. So, yes, AP has been keeping current on bills, so it's not like we have eight months' worth of bills out there, but I don't project we're going to finish anywhere near a huge surplus. And the reserve number would be adding those two together before any of the motions today, adding the 1.4 and 4.4 together, so it'd be a little less than 5.9 million before any of today's motions. So I also have in there, you know, the cash balance report and the AP report, but I'll see if there's any questions on that before I can answer on either of the other two questions.
Questions on the budget report. See none? Move the Children and Youth audit update?
Sure. Sure. So Children and Youth audit update, there's really probably three components. And again, one is to get a fiscal three, which is an OHS fiscal three, that's going to be responsible for Children and Youth. One is coordinating with, with my office. One is coordinating with my office, and the other one is really the timing of these budgets. So, I foresee us sitting down, we've talked high level, I meet with Lynn's team, so I already meet with the Office of Human Services about every four weeks to go over any fiscal issues. I would say that as soon as this budget is done, we'll have a plan of when we're gonna sit down, who's responsible for what, and obviously, knowing this needs to be done, you know, as soon as possible, and be ready to not only hit, but hope to exceed the audit deadline. So, we're aware that what's on our plate now, let's sit down in the middle of December, get a plan for when we get to the new year, who's responsible for what in Children and Youth. At that point, I hope they'd have a fiscal three, have the fiscal three and my office, and I think the manager and I talked about, we'll provide the data. So, Children and Youth staff and Luzerne County AP will put checks, payroll runs, any of that data, but would feel comfortable having a third party give the opinion. I don't want my office to do the opinion, so there's no appearance that it's slanted in one way or another when it goes to Children and Youth. So, we'll provide the data and work with someone. So, that's kind of the update.
So, Pedri, any additional comment in that regard?
Well, I think Brian covered it. You know, we're in the process of continually looking at what we can be doing in Children and Youth. Soon as we're through our budget process here, we have time to sit down and go over exactly the next steps. To tell you the truth, we are, everything has to be done for June of 2019, which, even though it's cold outside, doesn't, is not that far away. We look at how much time is we have on these things. So, this is an absolute priority for us, and we'll be proceeding as such.
If I could just follow up with the question?
Yes, go ahead.
So, when you talk about sitting, like, sitting down and looking at it and giving an opinion at what you're gonna work on, what, part of my question was asking about looking at the documentation from 2017, because when the auditors were here, they talked about money that was undocumented from 2017, and that was nearly two-point-five million dollars.
Correct, so-
So, is nobody doing any work on that right now?
Ms. Houck, I can answer that. The Office of Law is gathering information. Assistant Solicitor Patrick De La Valley and myself are going through that information. We're sending up actually interviews with former employees. Those that were employees before home rule came into effect, and employees that were on both pre-home rule and post-home rule, so that we can verify the trail of the amounts of money. After we conduct those interviews, we'll be speaking with Mr. Swets and going over the information that we, and the county manager, reviewing the information that we find.
Is that dealing specifically with the 2017 findings?
Yes.
Because there's two pieces of this. The one is the two-point-five, which is the twenty, in the 2017 monies, but then there was also the five-point-six million, that is apparently the historical discrepancy.
We're dealing with both. We're dealing with both.
Okay. All right, thank you.
The five-point-six-one, we're conducting the interviews, we're sending those up with the former employees, and hopefully, they'll be able to shed some light on how that five-point-six-one came into being, if it still exists, how, you know, and the history of it.
Well, I think it still exists, according to the auditors, but my question was-
Well, we'll see.
Right, but my question was really because when the auditors were here, and they talked about in the 2017, the undocumented two-and-a-half million dollars, the question was asked of whether it was an issue of fraud, and whether there was a potential for any charges to be filed against anyone, and the auditor said it was not for the auditing firm to decide, but with an investigation, that they couldn't probably, they couldn't rule that out. And I, I mean, I think that all the questions that we talked about when those auditors were here, Mr. Pedri said, "We're gonna pursue it, and we're gonna find out what happened to that money."
We are, we are, we are, and we'll make a recommendation to the county manager, who will then relay it to council.
And the council, and the county's auditor, Mr. Johns, also testified that there is no fraud, and there is no cash missing, cash missing. In fact, this two-point-five million dollars may actually be a surplus.
He wasn't talking about, he wasn't talking about Children and Youth?
Yes, he was.
Not, no, because he's, their audit specific, CLA's audit specifically said that they didn't make any findings on the independent audit, the audits of the component units.
Of the component units.
Because I'm talking about the auditor for Children and Youth.
Oh, well.
Who said that there was a potential-
Well, what she says in this meeting, and what she says otherwise, is a whole nother story, but that's a whole nother story.
You know, okay, but-
Well, I think, I think the auditor said the right thing. She should not offer an opinion. That's not her-
That's not her function.
-responsibility.
Right.
That's the responsibility of somebody doing the investigation, and I think you heard, Mr. Crockerwell's office is doing that.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Urban's question regarding planning and zoning?
I mean, Mr. Urban's question, if I can ask you real quick, Brian, I'll let you, I'll let you jump in where we can. If you look at the odds, Mr. Urban, you'll see that the county never has an overspending problem, we have an under-collecting problem, and that's where our revenues come into play, and that's the reason why in the 2019 budget, I've specifically allocated funds to get to what we're actually bringing in for revenues. And you're talking, I'm gonna talk to the course tonight about their revenue line items, but that specifically is an issue. For example, the Planning and Zoning Department, we always thought we were just behind, and we were behind, but now we're in the process of being able to get caught up to those processes, and we're gonna be able to continue to move forward on those things. We've implemented monthly budget meetings, we're meeting with every division head and every department head to go over not only expenditures, which we have been doing, but we're going over revenues. Because if you look at the audits, we're underspending, which is great, but we're missing our numbers on our revenues. I think those, some of those other numbers-
That's, that's what I was getting at. I mean, if you don't get your paycheck, you're gonna go and ask why. So, when you don't get a paycheck from the state, you should be asking why, and it shouldn't take an auditor-
Right.
-a year and a half to tell you that you didn't get your paycheck because you didn't submit the required documentation to get your paycheck.
I think-
I mean, that's still, that's where there's something missing.
I understand your question, and I agree with what the manager said. I think part of the issue is, when you're dealing with the state, whether it be for corrections, whether it be for the court, whether it be for budget and finance, we historically get paid months later. So, we'll submit an invoice in 2018 that's approved in 2018, we don't get that invoice for six, nine, twelve months. So, part of it is, it's not like we're dealing with a vendor that pays within three months, and now we haven't been paid in eighteen months. The other part of it is, as we said before, and I think it's on later on for the work session, is, you know, I don't know what every person does in budget and finance in the county, whether that be in planning and zoning, whether that be in corrections, whether that be in the, in the agencies. So, yes, we look at the high-level reports, and that's what we talk about, and we give some detail. Ms. Houck asked for more detail, we gave more detail than we used to. We have no problem doing this, but we can only be responsible for what's in front of us. So, part of it is because it's state money, and it's always been paid late, and part of it'll be fixed, as the manager said, when we're meeting monthly on these budget meetings.
And we found out in this case, it was paid late because we never submitted the documentation to get paid.
Correct.
Right. Could I ask one question on the budget?
Sure.
Just, is the ARC paid for this year?
Three-quarters of the ARC is paid, that's one of the final things we'll be paying. So, we'll have another payment at the end of the year. Right now, we're working on the debt and the, obviously, the payroll, but yes, it will be paid this year, even if it ends up being paid, it'll be paid this year or for this year. So, it'll be, it'll be in this year's expense budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Anyone else, any other questions for Mrs. Swets? Thank you.
Sure.
Moving down to number two, discussion regarding a resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a lease agreement amendment with Whitehaven Borough for the existing 911 communications tower, shelter, and any equipment.
You have Fred here?
Oh, Fred, okay.
Yeah, Fred's, Fred's the person on the-
Hello again.
You're busy today.
Busy. This is a authorization for council to approve a resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a land use lease agreement with Whitehaven Borough. We currently have a land use agreement in place, it's a dollar a year for the Whitehaven Tower site. The Whitehaven Municipal Authority is now defunct, so the current language in the current lease that we have mentions the Whitehaven Municipal Authority. We'd like to amend the lease, extend it for ninety-nine years, and just clean up the language in the lease. It was reviewed by myself thoroughly and the Solicitor's Office, so we recommend approval.
Any costs involved with this, Mr. Rosenkrantz?
There's a five-hundred-dollar annual maintenance fee that we'll share with the, with the municipality for road maintenance. It's near the Powerhouse Edery, if anybody's familiar with it. It's about a mile and a half long road back to it. It's shared with a water company back there, so it, it needs maintenance to, for us to access the site. So, it's a nominal fee, in my opinion, to maintain that road.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Rosenkrantz regarding the lease? Thank you. Discussion regarding a resolution authorizing the issuance of the tax and revenue anticipation notes?
I'll bring Mr. Swet for this one. This is the 2019 TRAN that, for council to review. The county has submitted our proposal, we received bids, the low bidder was PNC at two-point-four-nine percent. The amount that we put into the RFP was seventeen million dollars. As you know, we are very proud to be able to lower that TRAN from eighteen million dollars down to seventeen million dollars. Mr. Swet and I are gonna be sitting down with our consultants, PFM, to see if we can lower that down from seventeen million dollars to something less than that for 2019. So, this is the TRAN for 2019, and Mr. Swet will be able to take, fill in any blanks that I just filled in.
Sure, so, we put out an RFP, three people responded, PNC was the low bidder. Prior, one was with Citi, one was with M&amp;T. The setup's kind of the same. It's not a line of credit, but we don't pay it back all at once. So, when you get to June, we don't owe seventeen million, assuming, and again, we're saying a maximum of seventeen million. It's where we pay six million at the end of April, six million at the end of, so we do save some interest just in having less of an available balance. Our team will be sitting down to get, hopefully, to a lower number. This is a work session, so we wanted approval for up until seventeen. We will have a better note, number, or, or no, that's a firm number, by the time you're ready to vote on it. We'll have that ready for your packet.
And how's this percent compared to last year's percent?
Last year, we paid two-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars. It was a little bit, it was a little bit under three percent, so it's slightly better. And there's a couple of things that can win to it, so it's not just this. When you actually look at the budget, there's actually the fee for any of the work that gets done, the legal work, whether that's done by bond counsel, so it's not just the interest rate when I put that line item in. So, it's not, hey, we put in three-point-two-five percent, and we're getting two-point-four-nine. Also, that gets paid out of there is any kind of the bond counsel, so all the expenses related to the borrowing hit that temporary loan note that's in your budget.
So, we hope that the expense total will be less than what we paid last year?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Questions?
Yeah, the, the, go ahead, go ahead.
And then-
Go ahead.
The expense total, what's the total expense total, when you add it all up, what is the percent?
Sure, I'll get it for you. It's on, like, page fifty-six, on the end of the book here. Give me one second, what we had budgeted, and then it should be, this is obviously this year's, it's a little bit better, but let me grab this year's for you. So, in this year's, five-seventy-point-sixty-eight, we had in two-hundred-and-sixty, two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars, it's on page fifty-five. One of the things that will matter is who the bond counsel is, obviously, the amount. I think we've talked in the past, some of these are one-and-a-half to two percent of the TRAN, so if the amount of the TRAN is less, it'll be less of a fee for the third-party consultant for the bond counsel. So, we're hoping that it's less than two-sixty-five, because that's based on three-point-two-five percent all in, and we're hoping it's less than that.
Two-sixty-five?
Yeah, two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, correct.
That's the maximum exposure?
Yes.
Two-sixty-five?
Yes, that's what we have budgeted, that's what I feel.
That's for interest, that's for the interest payment as well as the bond counsel?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes, so, since 2012, I think we were borrowing eighteen million dollars every year, and we didn't have any reserve fund, and we were borrowing eighteen million dollars. So, we have a six-million-dollar reserve fund, could we maybe not lower, lower this to, I don't know, fourteen million or thirteen million, now that we actually have a reserve?
Sure, I'll take that. One of the things we talked about, and that we will be doing, is, we obviously don't want to borrow more money than we need, but we don't want to set ourselves up where we go down to twelve million and then back up to eighteen million. So, we talked about in the past that we really don't have any, this two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand wasn't received in prior years, but it's found money this year. We don't have many of those lottery tickets left, so if I were to do that and say, "Let's go down to fourteen million," that may be okay for this year, but what if I have to come back next year and, and ask for sixteen or sixteen and a half? It's not just council approval, it's the public, we get reviewed by Moody's, we get reviewed by S&amp;P, we have a potential borrowing, how to have that bigger swing, so we are looking at getting it down from seventeen. It was at eighteen when there was no reserve, but it's not gonna be twelve because of the fact that, that would be one-time, because of all the one-time cash we have in, and even the budget for 2019 has a million reserve, which is much less than the six million. So, to bring it down to twelve million would be a one-shot deal, only to have to have it go back up in the future years.
Well, sure, it'd be a one-shot deal, but we had one really, really good year, where we brought in, I don't know, how many millions, twelve million? We brought in a lot of money. There's a reason for why we have a reserve of that size now. I don't think it's unreasonable, I don't think it shows any, any kind of unreasonable fluctuation. The fact is, we had a good year, we have a reserve, and we, maybe we don't need to borrow that much money. Why would we borrow more money than we need and pay more interest than we need to pay?
We don't want to borrow more money than we need to pay, but there's a couple of things. Council obviously sets the budget, the manager puts it together. I don't know what council's prerogative is, even tonight, with this five-point-nine million. Where are we gonna end? Are we gonna end at five-point-nine million? Are we gonna end at three million? I don't know, that's council's prerogative, so I can't sit here and say, "Give me twelve million," and council made changes, which they have every right to do, your legislative body, to the five million to use for X, Y, and Z, and now I need fifteen million dollars. I can't do that. So, I do my best to not overestimate, I understand your point, there's interest involved, but we sit down and do this now for the whole year. We don't go back in July and say, "We need another two million dollars." So, we're looking to get it under seventeen, I don't think it's gonna be anywhere near twelve, but I agree it should be less, and I understand your point.
Sauce?
If I could, Mr. Swet's, what, did PNC cite any reasons why the percent dropped half?
They didn't, they actually didn't bid last time, so it's, it's just, again, it couldn't-
Market-related, or have we been doing some things right?
I don't really think it's market-related, if you look, the interest rate's been ticking up, I was actually happy with it. I think it had to do with what Ms. Houck said, when you have a reserve, and you have, are cutting deficits, they're looking at the history, they ask for the financial statement, as does anybody who bid, and when you look at the last few years versus prior, it's trending upward. So, I think that has a deal with it, they have our banking relationship, that may have something to do with it, but again, there's been plenty of years they didn't bid when they could have bid, so it's not just one thing.
All right, thank you. I think it kind of looks good that we've been doing the right things, and they're looking at the information and saying, this is now a good procedure to bid on, versus in the past years, where they thought maybe it wasn't so good. It's nice to have three entities coming in with bids, you know, get a little more competition, a little better pricing. Anyone else for Mr. Swets? Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Down to number four, discussion regarding an order submitting Luzerne County zoning map to rezone a two-point-one-five-three-acre parcel property in Huntington Township from suburban residence district S1 zone, the highway business district B3 zone. Who's gonna discuss that?
This is Mr. Eddie.
Mr. Eddie?
He's had a very busy couple of weeks. Yeah.
Mr. Eddie's our-
Planning and zoning director.
Fairly new planning and zoning director, correct?
Yes, not quite a month.
Not quite a month.
No, this is one of the first things I had to do, is sit in the planning commission meeting and, and talk about this. The applicant had come to the planning commission in October, I think it was, and it was for the entire parcel to change it from S1 to B3. And at the suggestion of the planning commission, they reduced the size of the request. And what you have in front of you now is meets and bounds description describing a portion of the property, 2.15 acres, which has not been subdivided because the applicant or the entity that will ultimately purchase the property is Dollar General Store. And they're under contract with the fire company to purchase the property and develop a store on the property, hence the request for the rezoning. If approved, they will move forward with their subdivision and then the land development process, go through the process, and you'll see them again when they come through with the, with the land development plan. But at this point, they're just seeking a request to rezone the property. There is B3 zoning across the street on several properties, including a car wash and a former car dealership, which I guess is targeted for something else in the near future. But that's what the request is.
Zoning board heard this appeal?
Yes. The, the planning commission reviewed it and recommended approval.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Eddie?
Any objections from anyone?
The neighbors had concerns about traffic and drainage. Most of the traffic for this particular property will come in through 239 and will not come from any other direction, primarily because any other direction would be inconvenient or inaccessible or more difficult than worth the time. The drainage issues can be resolved with actually improving the property. There is a drainage area that runs along the western portion of the property near the tennis courts, runs around the tennis courts, west side of the tennis courts, and down the hill toward 239. The applicant's proposed drainage area basin is actually going to be at the bottom end of that drainage ditch, so it's actually going to help collect and reduce water flow across the highway. So overall, it's ultimately going to improve that type of condition. But there were concerns in the neighborhood about the, about the application itself.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Eddie. Number five, discussion regarding resolution regarding supervision of financial personnel Luzerne County. Ms. Howe?
Yes. I asked to have this draft resolution included on the work session agenda so that we could have a discussion about it. I did bring this up at a previous council meeting, and I felt it would be good to have something, have a document to discuss rather than just a concept. So again, it's because the charter provides for the unification of the overseeing the finances of the county. And the administrative code also provides the budget, budget and finance division administers all the financial affairs of the county and its agencies, departments, and offices. And so this would be to align all staff positions, financial staff positions in all divisions and departments, to be supervised by the division of budget and financial services because it's in compliance with the charter and the administrative code. And as we discussed the last time, those people could be, people who work in different divisions or departments could specialize and work in, in those specific departments. It's not a matter of what office they sit physically in. It's a matter of where they report to and who supervises the finances of the county.
Questions, discussion?
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Ms. Howe, I want to reserve my opinion whether or not this would infringe upon the county manager's updated operations, but I have a couple of questions about this. What's really the goal? Is the goal?
To align all the staff positions so that they're all supervised by budget and finance.
And which, which staff positions are those?
Any financial positions that are found in any divisions, departments, offices, agencies, bureaus, et cetera, just as it says in here.
And how would that help the county?
It would bring us into compliance with the charter. I think that when you have different divisions, different departments, creating their own financial officer positions and controlling the flow of money in and out of a specific department, it lessens the oversight ability of the, of the budget and finance office to maintain awareness of what's going on in each office.
I believe you have a couple of issues there. Number one is, based upon your reading of the charter, you have section 512 and 513 specifically highlighted in your, in your provision. Did you draft this resolution, or did the solicitor's office draft this resolution?
No, I did.
512 deals with the deposit of funds, and 513 deals with, basically it has to be two signers on every check.
Right.
So in your section here is whereas you have that provide for the supervision of all county funds. That's a, in my opinion, incredibly broad overstatement of what 512 and 513 actually say.
That was the goal of the charter, though. It was to unify the, unify the finances under one umbrella. And that's found, that's clarified in the administrative code, in section 602 of the administrative code.
So you would agree with me that whereas is not correct?
No, I don't agree with you. I agree that, I, I do not agree that it's incorrect. I believe that that is what the charter was saying, but it's fleshed out in broader terms in the administrative code.
512 deals with the deposit of funds. Are you?
Right. And it's all under the control of the budget and finance. You're reading one section of it, and I'm reading the other.
I'm, 5...
Both concepts are...
512, well, I'm, I'm reading the law of the county, but so 512 says the deposit is into it, and 513...
Mr. Pedri, if you don't agree with it, that's fine. And if the solicitor's office would like to make some suggestions, I'm more than willing to...
Ms. Howe, I haven't said whether I agree with her or not. I'm asking some questions. So specifically then, with regard to those particular two sections, is it your opinion that departments of the county deposit their own funds? Is that your opinion?
No, Mr. Pedri. My goal here is specifically stated in the section that says now for, therefore, be it resolved, we wish to align all financial staff positions so that they fall under the supervision of the Office of Budget and Financial Services. And I don't know why anybody would be opposed to that, because I think it funnels everything into one specific supervisory agency, and that would be the Office of Budget and Financial Services.
Are you concerned that the people who are not specifically under the department, division of budget and finance are lying to the vision of budget and finance?
No, I am not. But I'm saying that there was an oversight of $2.5 million in one of those agencies this year that was picked up by auditors. And now we have seen in different budget hearings that there are other financial positions that are being created. Judicial Records has created their, another financial position in that office. As soon as you start to create somebody in an office who's specifically dealing with the finances in that office, you need to watch who they're reporting to, because somebody besides that office needs to be looking at the flow of money.
So you're looking at one person to look at all the flow of money?
No, I'm looking at an entire division to be following the flow of money.
Okay, so, but that's not included?
And that division is called the Division of Budget and Financial Services for a reason.
Would you agree with me that the auditors ask for numerous people to look over these things as opposed to one individual?
They, yes, they certainly do. And I'm not saying that there wouldn't be somebody looking at it in each, in each agency, in each division, in each department. However, it all needs to be collated in one place.
And how would the payroll work for those particular departments?
I don't know, Mr. Pedri. You've worked out payroll by outsourcing it, so I'm not quite sure how that would, how that works.
So that's a day-to-day operation decision?
I don't know. Am I being cross-examined here? Does anybody have anything they would like to discuss about this?
This, this is going to specifically, this is going to specifically look at how I manage the county finances?
Right.
And I don't have the ability to ask you any questions?
No, you have a lot of ability to ask, ask questions. And that's what you, that's what you're doing.
So for this particular person, this particular position, would you change the position title of the division head of budget and finance? Is that a different title?
No.
So we're adding supervision to this, to this location of numerous employees?
Right. So...
Do we change the job description?
Last year, last year, we pulled the security division into the sheriff's supervision because it made sense to do that.
Correct.
Because it was the same type of job. When you have the same type of job going on in different sections of the county, all of those financial services, shouldn't they all be supervised by someone with specific financial knowledge and awareness?
Well, Ms. Howe, they actually are all supervised by people that those financial offices. Every single deposit that comes into Luzerne County goes to the, to the Division of Budget and Finance. Every single payment that goes out of Luzerne County comes to Division of Finance. So I'm trying to figure out what the actual goal of this is, other than to continue to, I mean, everybody in the county reports to the county manager. So at any point, I can say that we're all working together. If your goal is not to figure out that somebody's lying to the Division of Budget and Finance, then I don't see the real need for this.
Well, it's not unheard of that that could happen. I think you would agree with the history of this county. And some of the findings, frankly, in the audit that haven't been addressed, such as the oversight of credit cards and some of the other things that the auditors listed, that the county auditors listed as problems and things that should be addressed. I think that, that you would agree that there should be some oversight and some centralization of how the, the overall supervision is managed.
Would you consider changing a job description for the Division of Head of Budget and Finance based upon this?
I'm not suggesting changing this, the, the job description of anyone. I'm suggesting changing where that line of supervision goes to for the people who are working in the different departments and divisions. I'm not suggesting changing the, anything about the Office of Budget and Finance, except to let them pick up supervision of the, all the financial personnel.
Mr. Swetz?
I have a few questions as well. And again, it could be the group. I don't want to, I know Ms. Howe wrote this, but if the group has something. Not really, the timing on this rollout, I, again, I understand, I understand your point. There are findings. I know it's a work session, not a meeting. Is this a 2019 issue? Is this a 2020 issue? Is this something that happens immediately after it gives us a report?
Well, right now, it's up for discussion. It's up for discussion.
Well, they all would become part of whatever resolution. If it passes, there'll be time involved, et cetera. So that would all be answered in that document.
Because I think when you go to the security, we talked about, because it is a similar thing. I understand Ms. Howe's point. We did change divisions before, but that wasn't something that security, when, you know, and two departments got merged overnight. It was done over the course of, in one year, there are two separate budgets. Then they were one division. The history was kept. So it's not something that you would just say, hey, on December 4th, we vote on it, and December 5th, there's going to be no changes. So that was kind of my question. Again, I realize it's a work session, not a voting meeting. Just, you know, what kind of timeframe would there be? Are we talking about all the people directly, or will we have the department heads, or, you know, maybe a fiscal three report to me? Right now, there's around 35 people. I get she said the division, not one person. I understand how you wrote it. Now you'd be adding, if you take every fiscal tech, we heard last week that there's six or seven just of children and youth. So you'd be going from 30 to probably 100 if it was direct report. So those are just, and I realize council's not voting, and I, just some of the questions and concerns I had. Also, you know, anyone who oversees a lot of the stuff that Ms. Howe talked about, and I've done some research myself, they have, so if somebody's doing an accounting person and a budget person, so we talked about years ago, creating a deputy position, and there was pushback on that. If you look at Lackawanna County, they have a budget manager, and they have an accounting manager. So when you do that, you free up a division head to do some of these things that were asked, but that's not done without creating or changing job duties, not just for the division head, but for the whole department and division. So that was my only questions and thoughts on it.
Okay, it's part of the discussion.
Right. And I think those are all great points. And, you know, that's certainly something that we could, we could all discuss if we have an idea that we want to implement this.
Well, I think if we want to implement, we should get the discussion out there so we know exactly what we're talking about.
Absolutely.
If we indeed would like to vote on it.
That's why it's here on paper, because I didn't want to discuss a concept. I wanted to discuss details just like this.
Well, I, I think from listening to the discussion, it sounds like we need to work out some of the details a little bit more. Certainly, we can add it.
Lynda, it seems to me that, and tell me if I'm wrong, that the fiscal techs, fiscal people in each of the departments, and you want to have them reviewed by budget and finance, ultimately, Brian's group, is it because you feel they may have in the agencies or the other departments less financial experience than the budget and finance group?
Well, I think that certainly is a possibility. I mean, quite frankly, it's really disconcerting to find out that somebody can't document $2.5 million. And I think that you need to have somebody with some financial experience overlooking, or overseeing that, not overlooking it. But, you know, when, when we talked about this with children and youth, when I, and I asked the question about fiscal techs and how many people, because, for example, there are nine financial positions in, in that office, and I said, why do you need consultants besides? And one of the things that was said was, well, a lot of those people do data entry. Well, if you have six people doing data entry, that, that's not necessarily something that would directly report maybe to, to the director of budget and finance, but they would report to the person above them who would have some oversight over them. But eventually, eventually, but it has to channel back to budget and finance. That's my point. It can't stop at the division head in each of those divisions, because those people are not necessarily, I mean, they're, they're managing, you know, a huge budget, but there's a reason why there are people with financial experience that work in the county, you know? So eventually, I think that the line of supervision has to funnel back to the Office of Budget and Finance, because that's where the expertise is.
Right. Okay.
Anyone else?
I mean, if I could, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Again, I just see this as one of these instances where this is like the essence of home rule government, that we're looking to, and if I read Mrs. Howe's resolution correctly here, you know, just to make government more efficient, make it more accountable to the council, which is therefore to the people. And if anything, it seems to me, this would even make the manager's job even more easy, because it's under one, one supervisory role. And we've had this conversation before, Mr. Swetz, correct me if I'm wrong, but you oversee people that are not physically in your office. They don't have to physically be there. So I don't see this as necessarily moving different chairs around the county offices, but it's, it's making government more efficient.
I don't know about the efficiency part, but I do think that there's more requirements than they're going to be involved with budget and finance. And we may have to look at splitting some of the duties to get a better handle on what's happening, whether it be accounting or auditing or whatever. So that's one of the parts of the decision you're going to have to consider.
Well, but I think those are the kind of details that are really up to the manager. I mean, I think, you know, again, it's council...
Well, it's only up to the manager if we allow for it in the budget.
Right. Right. But, but it's up to council to set the policy and say, how do we want this to be? Where do we want the trail to lead? Who do we want to have the overall supervision of it? And then the manager makes it happen. I mean, that's what it is to be a manager. You know, we set the policy. We say, this is what we want it to, want, want the county to look like. And then the manager is the guy who's supposed to manage the county employees to make that happen.
But also, are we also looking at, you know, ultimately, the budget and finance director goes to our county manager to really give it his blessing?
Well, he reports to him.
Yeah.
Well, everybody in the county reports to the county manager.
Everybody reports to the county manager, except council.
Yeah, the charter and the administrative all point to the county manager.
Right.
As oversight. Just a cursory review of the resolution, we're going to have to amend the administrative code, because there's many instances where...
I did not find, and I know you said that last time, and if you could give me some specific examples, maybe we could take that up at our administrative code review.
Under the Division of Human Services, just one example. And we are going to be reviewing all these different areas. One of the responsibilities is to review annual plans and budget estimates of the office. They list all the offices under Human Services.
Well, there's something wrong with that.
As the same issue with Judicial Records.
There's nothing wrong with that.
Would you let Ms. Carcoman finish, please?
So, you know, the generalization and what you're envisioning here will require amendments so that there are consistencies. And I, the charter is clear that all the administration answers to the county manager, which would result in the county manager deciding how he wants his administration structured.
The question, I mean, what about courts, DA, controller, Ms. Howe? Those would be on their own? Or they, they would also report to Mr. Swetz?
Well, I believe that the courts and all of the, all of the financial finances in all of those offices, everything is actually under the jurisdiction of the county. So there is not really separate, yeah, there is not really supposed to be a separation in all that. And I think that the Office of Budget and Finance would eventually, all of it would have to eventually come back to Budget and Finance, the financial pieces of it.
Well, pardon me, pardon me like that.
I know. We set the budget for every one of those departments, and they manage it, but at the end of the day, the financial management has to come back to the county.
Well, I think that...
Budget and Finance.
That raises a whole other issue to who, 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 who's...
I thought we had some of that corrected. I mean, two years ago, when the courts had spent more money than was allocated to them by the council, I thought, we said we were going to stop that. I mean, I think it was, they weren't allocating money for the retirement fund or something like that two years ago, and they allocated $600,000 or $700,000 more, spent $600,000 or $700,000 more than they should have. I thought that was corrected at that time. So they, they, all the departments have to ultimately report to you, and you have to know what's going on in the department, or they can spend whatever they want and not follow the budget.
I agree. It sounds nice on paper, and I'm not against it, but there's a lot of training that's involved. If you just go to children and youth, we ask about the time that I spent, and my team sat down there. And I told this council at a public meeting, I don't know all the Act 148 regulations. That's under children and youth jurisdiction. That's, there's Office of Human Services. If this position is envisioned the way I think it's happening, I could be wrong, it's almost a full-time position. So if I, and I'm saying me, and I realize you, you know, this isn't happening tonight, if I'm required to do that, I think we need somebody in the office to do the day-to-day things, because I will be in Penn State and Harrisburg twice a week, every month, at least for the first year, getting caught up on, you're talking about community development, you're talking about the agencies. There's a lot of pieces. You've got solid waste funding. It's not just general fund. I understand the point behind it, but that's a lot of training in day-to-day, and then there's still audit in day-to-day operations that need to be handled as well.
I would think you're talking about one person overseeing $300 million from the side of things, from those side of things, and then...
One division. Not necessarily one. And I mean, you oversee $300 million.
I do.
So when it comes, when you...
I also oversee eight division heads.
Yeah.
Who oversee the day-to-day operations.
Right. But, but you have an Office of Budget and Financial Services that is not only one person. There's one division head, just like there's one manager.
Correct.
There's one division head, but it doesn't mean that it's one guy at the end of the day, or one, one person at the end of the day.
Ms. Howe, there's, Ms. Howe, there's a problem. What's going to happen?
The buck stops somewhere.
Correct. All right. So it really does come down to the one person at the top of the top of the list.
I get it. I get it. But, but let's try to make the person where the buck stops have somebody that has a lot of financial awareness.
Well, I mean, I, I understand your point.
I'm not talking about you. I'm talking about as it comes from each of the departments.
I understand the, the point. I, if, if there's not a concern, in my opinion, if there's not a concern over fraud, or if there's not a concern over somebody lying to Brian, and if that, if that does come out, if somebody does lie, lie to Brian, then those individuals need to be... then those individuals need to be, you know, those individuals need to have supervision and done, which is what we did in the past for the individual who didn't live up to our standards with regards to our finances.
Right. And, I think there is a valid concern for fraud at any level. And, you know, I think it's something that we all have to be vigilant about, especially given the history of, of this county. And, you know, the fact that there's two point five, I keep bringing it up, but there's two point five million unaccounted for. And, you don't know if it was fraud. You don't know why. But, that's exactly the point of why it needs to be supervised.
That's another reason why I would have a concern for everything going to one person. I think that's another issue.
One division.
One divi, well-
One division.
Miss Segman?
Let me just, to me, it seems like what you want would be, like, you know, we said that revenue's not coming in fast enough, in terms of pieces that go to the state. So, at some point, whether this person would meet with these department heads on a monthly or bimonthly basis. You look at the revenue things, are they going in untimely? If they aren't, he has to tell David, and David has to be aware of that, that somebody's not following through. I look at what you're doing, is you're trying to prevent the big catastrophes prior to them becoming big catastrophes.
Right, right.
Is that what you, I mean-
Yeah, I think this would help a lot.
And, I think my question on timing was more, you know, Ms. Howe talked about the five point nine million in reserve. If we're going to restructure departments and divisions, and again, I know it's a work session, nothing's being voted on today. Now would be the time to do it, rather than come back and say, if we're going to restructure everything in 2019 or 2020, where's the funding coming from?
I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure council doesn't want to allocate extra money to the general fund that we, that's not needed. So, we're talking about taking positions out of the Human Services, and putting them into the general fund, and then talking about direct billing back, or something along those lines.
That would have to be a discussion, and when, and if we get to the point where we're going to implement something. We'll have to figure out the funding, responsibilities, job descriptions, et cetera, that would go along with all that. There's a lot of detail that has to be clarified and written out, so everybody's aware of exactly what process will be involved. Mr. Urban, you have the question?
Just one, one final comment. I, I think your, your comments are well noted, and I think you're trying to do the right thing, and you're trying to implement the charter. The other question, though, is, you know, we're, we're tasked, you know, this body as a council is tasked to approve all the, all these funds, and we don't have any staff. You know, we're part-time. Some of us work full-time, and overtime, and especially this time of year. We don't have anybody, any additional people. We're not saying, give us a budget officer, or give us more staff, or give me an assistant.
We could, we could say that.
We could, we could, but we haven't. So, I don't see why Brian wouldn't need it, need another staff. He's just had those people report to him. People within the, the divisions report to the, to the, to the primary person in the division, and the division reports to you. It's, it's not a big deal, in my opinion.
Anyone else? Well, I think we need more discussion, and some things came out this evening, probably have to be looked at. I don't think we're ready to put it on the agenda, but we certainly should bring it back to work session, and hopefully get some answers, some questions.
I think perhaps maybe, Mr. Segman, if I may, maybe Budget and Finance and the manager, they can come with, with reservations they have.
Well, I think we have to have, between Budget and Finance, the manager's office, maybe the solicitor's office, we have to have some things worked out. Any input from anyone?
I was going to say too, perhaps just putting extra thunder, this might yield some, some real fruit. Maybe they, maybe management could say, well, look, boy, this is such a good idea, in this aspect. I'm just saying.
I would hope it'd be the case, Mr. Haas, but our experience has been, that's not the case.
All rainbows and unicorns around, Mr. Chair, in Loser County.
So, any comments or suggestions, recommendations, please forward those, and we'll make sure that they're part of the discussion. And, we'll ask Mr. Swetson, the manager's office, and the solicitor's office to sit down and come back with some concrete information that we can provide prior to the meeting, so we have some information to think about and discuss. Moving on to number six.
Mr. Kellher?
Yes.
For the boards and commissions. We have two sessions set up, November 29th and December 20th. We have seventeen applicants at this point. We're going to have a certain percentage of those. Sometimes, that's a surprise, right, Sharon?
Mm-hmm.
That'll show up for the interviews. I bumped into one of the people who just put his thing in last night. So, I, in fact, he gave it to the county manager's aide, because he couldn't get here in time for Sharon. So, Sharon does a wonderful job keeping on top of that. December, or November 29th, 5:30.
That's Thursday, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
And, December 20th, I think that might be a Thursday also, I'm not sure.
Correct.
Both dates at 5:30. And, while I'm at it, if I could mention, the Retirement Board has a meeting on December 5th. And, if anybody has any questions on council, you're welcome there to come to that meeting at four o'clock, okay?
And, am I correct, Mr. Kellher, I think you've already placed an advertisement in the paper?
We've placed one advertisement. I think Sharon, you're going to place another one later on? No?
Yes.
No. Place one advertisement for both meetings, so people knew wherein when.
Plus any terms, right?
Say that again?
Any terms of office that expired at the end of the year.
You're talking about the ABC, I thought you were talking about the retirement.
Oh, ABC.
There's going to be another add in the paper after this interview session, so that we can accumulate some more applications for December.
And, you list offices, terms, and you leave your, you leave a, you leave your phone number, they can call you for information. Not personal phone number, but here at the office.
It'll list all the boards that will have expirations by the end of the year, or have current expirations that we need applicants for.
Budget Finance, are you done?
I'm sorry.
Anything else?
No, I think we're-
Okay, thank you.
The Budget Finance Audit, we'll be having a meeting at, once we get through the budget process, prior to Christmas. I'll be sending a note to Ms. Howe and Mr. Perry to see what's a good time and date to have that meeting, and then we'll contact our auditors to make sure that we can meet with them. And, that'll be the pre-meeting to get started, talking about the, the audit process for the 2018 year. Mr. Haas?
Yes, sir. Legislative Committee, we have not met since last meeting, but I was able to get down to the Fall Conference for CCAP, held at Hershey on Sunday, the 18th. It was for a couple of days. I was just there to get to Sunday for the meetings. And, every, every fall, the, the county for, for newcomers on council, CCAP makes up their list of priorities for the new year coming up. And, the number one priority that the, the association vote on was elections reform. So, it's very timely. It's something we're going to have to deal with, we're going to contend with these next couple of months, make a decision on that. Also, Greg is here on the island, so the number six priority was substance addiction and abuse. So, just know it's on everybody's radar, as far as the opioid crisis out there. So, hopefully, the state and the federal government will be more forthcoming for that. Again, thanks for entertaining, Mr. Chair. I sat on two committees at CCAP. One is the taxation assessment. And, I asked them, the discussion point a few weeks ago, was that the commercial sets that Mr. McCabe was talking about, in part, the commercial appeals that we've been seeing. Every year, we get blasted with hundreds of thousands of dollars going out the door. So, I took it to the CCAP attorneys and the taxation group down there, and they said, constitutionally, state, the state constitution, we have to have tax fairness and equity across the board. However, the, the folks there on the board did say, going forward with future abatement proposals, that it could be written to the contract, that you can, if, if you're going, you can have a memorandum of understand, or something like that, that you can't, that you would agree not to go after an appeal for a certain amount of years. You do that beforehand in the contract, but you can't just preclude somebody to go for an assessment, because every year, by commonwealth law, you have the ability to have an appeal every year, commercial or, or, or on private property. So, I thought that was something maybe forthcoming. So, if this council or management ever considers more Koz's or Lerdas, perhaps we can really talk about that, because again, we get, we get surprised every time, and the revenue we were expecting to get suddenly is not going to materialize, after, even after ten years in some cases. Totally unfair, in my opinion, but that, that is the law. So, I was happy to have some discussion on that. Regarding the Elections Reform Committee, the elections machines and mandate came up. I just want to pass this out to my colleagues here. What you're going to see, everybody, is just the, the different voting systems for every county across Pennsylvania. And, there's, there's pretty broad consensus, consensus with CCAP, all these association members, that the timing of, of this mandate is extremely unfortunate. I'm trying to be diplomatic here, but that there's just not a lot of, of money in most coffers across the, the state. So, the position of, of the association, I just want to read this, because, again, we really need to discuss this, is that regarding ballots and election systems, the association supports, the association supports county choice and selecting voting equipment. Obviously, has to be compliant with state and federal certification requirements. It should be voluntary and on their own calendar. It should be depend on the availability, and the timeline should be reasonable. There was a lot of pushback from counties, saying they want, they want this to be rolled out in 2020 during the presidential election, which, or at least prior to, which if it's prior to the election, there's not a lot of turnaround time. If it's during the election, that is potentially be a disaster, where you got to train all your election staff during that very pivotal year. And, we don't want to be Florida, we don't want to be Broward County here. So, looking at that, that proved very difficult. Letter B here, out of that, says it should meet the expectations and the needs of each individual county. And, you see, that's just, it's just a graphic showing that, that there's like three, three systems, but really subsets, there's a lot of different systems out there. So, one size does not fit all for, for the state. And, again, we're, we're just asking the state that they would give us flexibility, that they would fund the mandates they have, but also give us local control. And, that's the essence of county government. Letter C, the association feels it should have reliable and steady, ongoing state and federal funding. Right now, they have a really small match, it equates to like five percent or something for our, our needs. They're asking us to pony up four million dollars for new voting equipment. We don't have that. We'd have to float a bond, and our machines are nearing the end of life, but they still function extremely well. And, again, they are not vulnerable to internet attack. It's a closed system, which is something we keep on hearing now. And, public are obviously worried about the integrity of elections out there, but our system can't be hacked, because it's not on the internet. But, that's, I think, what a lot of folks feel out there. So, in, in my opinion, and some other folks on, from other counties, that's what's kind of driving this, that we're, we're so fearful, the sky's going to fall, the Russians are going to come and get us, or something like that. It's not going to happen. So, the essence is that, across the board, is that there should be county funding, to keep our state funding, rather, for the counties. The state has also been tasked with, or the state, Department of State has been tasked with certifying the voting machines. To date, nothing's changed over the past several months, and that's what this is, all available online. You can see it, but there's been no movement about even certifying through the state the voting machines. So, we're looking at buying new machines that are still, yet not officially certified. So, the timeliness also is, is a little off. Lastly, there was consortium of other groups. This is just one group. It's the Council of Governments out in the central part of Pennsylvania. It, it's a group made up of, of eleven counties in the central part of the state. Essentially, they're saying, look, until full funding is, is approved here, we have severe reservations about this. So, and I'm going to share that with the members, too, it's just very basic. But, my point is, everybody, that I think it's very premature to put county taxpayers on the hook for four million dollars that we certainly don't have, that we certainly don't need immediately, and that if we jump right now, we, we might really lose funding going forward, because I, I think there's, there's a federal push to really fund this. But, I can, if I can encourage managing my colleagues here to just hold off on jumping in to another four million dollar debt, because I think we've done pretty good here, arresting the debt in Loser County. I always say, you know, we're, we've turned a corner, we're not off the block yet. So, we keep that in mind. And, I just want to encourage, I'll close up here by saying, CCAP, I've learned so much. I encourage members to come, come on down sometime, and really see, you'll, you'll get a mouthful, and an earful, and a briefcase full of stuff that, that they have available there. But, I think collectively, we could really help do county taxpayers across the state a real bunch of service. And, if you look online, we got an email just yesterday from the president, it lists the six priorities that CCAP has going forward. So, again, we can partner with other counties, and Sheila and Steve and I in the legislative committee, we're happy to go to bat. But, if we keep talking, or keep our relations up with our state representation, too. So, thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, Sheila?
Harry, did CCAP, at the meetings, or has it ever been brought up, early voting in Pennsylvania?
Yeah, there's, there's not real consensus on that. Again, the early voting, people are worried about fraud. There are some people, they, they like the, the community aspect better. People said it cheapens democracy, you know. I understand, you want to make it as, as accessible as possible to people.
Yeah, it seems like it's the way of, of what's going in the country. And, also, I thought, it appeared to me from this past election, and what people, what states were doing, a lot of it was paper ballot, again.
Yeah. We even see that around Pennsylvania itself. Some of our rural counties, Sheila, they, they don't need these high-tech electronic machines. They only got several thousand voters in, in some of our counties. So, yeah, absolutely. It could be an option.
Harry, I, I think you were attending the meeting the night Marissa was here, Crystal.
Yeah.
And, I did bring up paper ballots, because I know Lackawanna uses paper ballots. And, I know they're much less expensive, much less expensive. And, she, well, you know, her answer basically was, but there's a lot of waste involved, you know, in the printing of those.
Sure.
Actually, Lackawanna County was just informed, though, that their paper ballot system is not in compliance with the mandate. So, they're going to have to change their own paper ballot system as well.
Are you talking about the mandate piece?
Correct. Yeah, so, Lackawanna County was under the impression that they don't have to change their voting system, but now they, from my understanding, is they, they're now have to-
My question is to Harry, if we didn't jump into this mandate, what are the repercussions by the state?
Well, again, our, our, our machines are still certified. They have to decertify our machines first, which no, no, nobody that I talked to foresee, foresees that happening. At the same time, there, there's not a lot of buy-in across the state. This is, this mandate comes straight out of the governor's office, out of the Department of State. This is not, which is not authorized by the General Assembly. There have not been dedicated funds toward this. And, it's, I just think the approach was not correct, and it's putting us, it's putting us in a precarious position, because again, our machines, they're, they're not going dark on election day. Again, it's, it's a lot of money out the door for something that I don't think is, is an extreme priority. But, again, I'm just one person, and I couldn't, if you give some other folks here on the call, on your map, and any color of county on there, a lot of them would agree with you.
How do we get our, aside through the representatives, I mean, what's, what's the best way to present this, so that?
That's why you blogged the CCAP.
Okay, well, that's good.
There, I mean, the strength in numbers, and, you know, we'll continue what we do on the legislative committee, Sheila.
Large lobby, right?
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, it's, you know, essentially, the average person doesn't realize, we're, we're only as good as the state will equip us. You know, we're an appendage of the state, just like a school board is, they're really a function of the state. And, if they're willing to pass down these mandates after, I mean, Citizen Ray by out here, talking about the underfunded judiciary, still, you know, they cut us quarter of a million dollars a couple of years ago. Well, thanks a lot. And, that was done by conservative people in the legislature. That's not conservative, cutting, cutting funding to save the buck on their end, and pour it down, it's not conservative, just passing the buck. So, I, I'm just very frustrated, because I'm sure you can see it coming off, and you see it on everybody else. It's, it's been six years, and I keep on seeing this over and over and over again. And, here we are again, four million dollar voting machines. So, sorry, I'm-
Let's hope that the majority of the counties hang together, and, and there'll be a change.
And, again, the, the federal government can certainly help out on this endeavor. They did it with, with HAVA, too.
It's a state mandate, and hopefully, we can, wait for that.
Harry, there's a couple of issues, though. When, when we switched over to the new machine, there was a learning issue with the public, and a lot of the public, I think, were leery about coming out to vote on the new machines. And, I think, you know, voter turnout was lower. So, I think the people are used to these machines that we have out there now.
Mm-hmm.
And, like you said, they're not hooked up to the internet. They're not subject to being hacked or anything like that. The biggest issue you hear is lack of calibration to where you push one name, and, and, you know, the screen's not matched with, with the, with the background, you know, with the name. That's, that's really the big issue that we hear with it. Was, was John Gordner, Senator Gordner, at the meeting?
He was not there, no, but we got his letter a few weeks ago.
We got his letter, but we get any feedback from, from Senator Gordner regarding his meeting that he had down in York, I think it was?
I, I, yeah, I didn't bump into any legislators down there whatsoever, but I'm, I'm sure you could certainly give him a buzz. I mean, he does actually represent part of Loser County, western, western area, so. It seems like he's passionate about the issue.
Yeah, he, he was, he was indicating it was an unfunded mandate, he was having a hearing.
We have to move on at this point.
He'd be a good advocate. But, Mr. Chair, I thank you for taking, taking the time out of the meeting. Thanks, everybody, for listening.
Real Estate Committee?
Right. We, our committee has not met. We will schedule a meeting in the new year in consultation-
in consultation with Mr. Schnee and Mr. Boeb. I'm sure we'll find a good date.
Thank you. Ms. Howe?
Strategic Initiatives has not met this quarter, and I was hoping that we could get a meeting in maybe December 11th, and I'll check with Mr. Bruminski and see if he's available, just to kind of clear up some things for the end of the year before we hit January. And the Code Review Committee, we're still waiting for-
I am happy to report that we did get responses from all the division department heads. There are some responses that what I'm going to label as maybe semantics, which will make those changes. There's some that are substantive, so tomorrow I'm going to be setting up meetings with those division department heads. There's only three, to review those changes with them. And then we'll be able to have the, the proposed changes.
Great, okay, because if you didn't say that tonight, I was going to have a resolution at the next meeting.
No, it's, we have them, we, we got a little stalled with the holiday, with Thanksgiving, timing-wise, so Assistant Solicitor Patrick Delavalli, who's working with me on the audit, is also working with me on the administrative code, and we met today, and our plan is to meet with the, those division heads. And it, it's not major changes, but we just want to make sure that what we're doing, or what is requested, is consistent with the charter.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Haas?
Yes, sir. Blood Property Committee, we will host the second workshop on Monday, December 3rd, at 6:00 PM. There will be a, a meeting of, of the whole at 5:30, nearly prior, and that was pushed back because we had a conflict with some council budget hearing, I believe it was, just a few weeks ago, it was originally scheduled for middle of, of November. And respect to our solicitor has separated from appointment from the county, Caitlin Twigger did a, a great service to us, and your office was represented well by her, Ms. Karko, so we're really going to miss her.
That's from Ohio.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't know where, where she was going, and it was bigger and better